Let's, let's get the show on the road. That's my video. Right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the second town hall meeting. We invited six candidates to participate in the meeting. The, the meeting on Tuesday had seven candidates. There we go. And so, uh, so we have four candidates present at the moment. The, uh, one of the candidates, Zola Shaki, was with us earlier, but he dropped out. I guess he's having problems. And then, um, Shinas, I phoned and she said she was also having internet problems. I'm hoping she will join us shortly. Azim Omar, I also phoned, but his phone is switched off. But we're just gonna have to start without it. So my name is Edwin Anglis. I'm the communications officer for the Observatory Civic. And on behalf of the OCA, I'm welcoming everyone to this meeting. The OCA decided that in the interests of strengthening participatory democracy, we would organize these online town hall meetings so that all the voters on Ward 57 could get an opportunity to find out what the people who wish to represent us, because I'm also a voter in Ward 57, are made of. Please note that the meeting is being recorded and it's also being simultaneously live broadcast on the OCA Facebook page. You should all have received the link to the live broadcast. And the fact that it's being broadcast live to the OCA page means it will be available online, uh, at least until election day. So people who had other commitments and weren't able to join in now can go back and listen to it. And so the OCA felt this initiative of holding the town hall meetings was particularly important in view of the fact that Ward 57 has a record number of candidates ever. There are thirty-four candidates vying for your attention and your vote, of course. We spent a lot of time trying to track down the contact details of all thirty-four candidates by using Google, Facebook, LinkedIn, and of course, by contacting the political parties themselves to ask them for their candidate's details. In the end, we were only able to get the contact details of twenty-four of the thirty-four candidates. And of those twenty-four, fifteen responded to our requests to join a town hall meeting. Sadly, we have to assume that those who did not respond are not actually interested in getting your vote. I will make some more concerted efforts to get the shy ones to respond positively to our invitation. But if by the end of this week they have not done so, we will certainly make their names known to you and we will describe the lengths that we went to to try and get them to respond to our request. But we will certainly make it known that the candidates who did not respond are actually not interested in hearing what you, the voters, have to say and nor do they want to tell you what their plans are should they be elected. The ground rules for this meeting are that only the candidates may unmute their mics and only whilst they have been given the floor. Everyone else is, of course, welcome to post questions in the chat box. Uh, and these questions will be shared on the Facebook page, the OCA Facebook page afterwards. We're also going to be creating a new, um, uh, page within the OCA website. And we will post, uh, the recordings of these, of today's meeting and Tuesday's meeting as well as the, uh, uh, party memorandums, uh, policy documents that we requested all the candidates to send us. So you will be able to refer to them on the OCA website. Um, as we have, well, my speech says, as we have six candidates present, but unfortunately, we only have four. And Zola's back. So we have five candidates present. We will start off by giving each candidate exactly three minutes to respond to the first question. And after the first round of responses, there will be a second question posed to the five, six candidates and each one will have a maximum of two minutes to respond. At the end of the meeting, we will, um, we will ask individual candidates, we will direct individual, oh, sorry, we will direct specific questions to individual, uh, candidates. Uh, and at the very end of the meeting, I'm going to be posting a poll onto this Zoom chat. It'll appear on your screen and you will be asked to rate the candidate who you were most impressed by in the course of this meeting. The top two or three candidates will then be asked if they would like to attend a final town hall meeting, uh, next week. Uh, and that meeting will have a much more open debating structure to it. We will open the floor to, uh, participants, not just to the candidates. I'm now gonna hand over the chairing of the nitty gritty of this meeting to Kensei Khadebe. Kensei is not a voter in our ward, but she is very passionate about civic involvement and participatory democracy. So over to you, Kensei.
Thanks, Edwin. Good evening to everybody tonight. I'm excited to be facilitating this conversation. Um, just a quick run through, and I think Edwin ran through the important elements of this evening, but I'm repeating them here specifically for our candidates, is that we will have three questions and each of the questions will be timed. And I'm sharing this now. I will be strict with time. So once you've reached your allotted time, I will cut you off or mute you. So just to kick us off, we're gonna start with the first question and the candidates will have three minutes to answer this question. I've just posted the question in the chat box, but I'm gonna read it out quickly. The first question is, if you're elected as ward councillor, you'll be one of two hundred and thirty-one councillors in the city of Cape Town competing for resourcing this ward's needs amongst a hundred and sixteen wards. Firstly, do you live in the ward? What do you think are the most urgent needs in Ward 57? What have you done so far in your capacity to, to address these? And should you be elected as ward councillor, how will you attempt to use the means at your disposal, example through the council's integrated development planning and budget processes to respond to this? And to kick us off, I'd like to start with Zola Klaki. Can you please unmute yourself and you have three minutes?
This is Zola Klaki from the African Freedom Revolution. First of all, I'm not a citizen in the world, but I understand that all the problems are the same, although in the geographical areas, they might be slightly some differences. But I think that for the fact that I'm a citizen of, of this country and also a citizen, uh, of the city of Cape Town, I know exactly what the problems are.
Zola, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you please switch your camera on?
Wow.
Thank you.
And now.
Yeah.
Is it on now? Is it on now?
We can see you, Zola, and we can hear you. Thank you. Go ahead, Zola.
Oh, okay. And what I, I, okay. What I know is that there's a problem in the city of Cape Town in most area and in the observatory will be also the same, similar problems that we have. We understand the District Six and then the housing problem. This area which is very rich in its history and I think that history should be preserved. And I also understand that there is a problem of housing in the area and also the jobless and also that the people have been waiting for years for housing and so on. And also I understand is, I also understand that there's a problem for youth and also for substance abuse. And I also understand that in, in the area, there is also a problem of, uh, homeless and crime as well. But from my side, I think through the IDP, when I've been elected in, uh, in the city of Cape Town to represent the ward, Ward fifty-seven, I will be using all, uh, systems that are at my disposal, especially the integrated development plan, because that is the system whereby you get in contact with communities through the community participation pro- process, whereby I believe that you cannot do or oppose systems to the community on which they have not mandated you. During that process whereby I'll get, uh, the whole processes or the, 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 the problems at large where I'll get the mandate from the community on which that I know that I have a passion of. And from my capacity as.
You have thirty seconds.
From my capacity, uh, I have been involved in, in, in the community work for, I mean, for the last, uh, ten years of my life. And then I've been sharing some of, uh, uh, community initiatives. And through my passion for job creation and youth development, I think that those skills will help me a lot. And especially as when I look at the Cape Town, the most areas, the, the problems are the same here. And I can tell you on that.
I'm gonna have to cut you off. And I'm gonna ask our next candidate, Pigo Ngonyama, to go next.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello. Yes, I am Pigo Lomzi Ngonyama. I come from the African National Congress. Uh, the first question is, do I live in the, in the ward? Uh, yes, I was living there, but I, I left because of the rates. They are quite high. Uh, what do you think are the most urgent needs in the, in Ward fifty-seven? Homeless, homelessness is a key issue which raises the issue of dealing with the holistic by the provision of social housing. The number of households will require compromise by the continued increase rates and utilities, as I left as well. Uh, such is, such as pensioners living on fixed incomes, students and recent graduates who cannot afford the rates that are in, in observatory. And not at least, uh, of all this is, is hugely problematic development at River Club. There's a problem at River Club, which is not addressed. Uh, at River Club, there is a, a, a building, a development that is built on a, on a, a flag plane, which will have environmental consequences in heavy rains, which has impacted on local indigenous species such as the leopard, the leopard, uh, tot. But the key issue is the development in the landscape to the indigenous people of the Cape. I can identify with the problem as my people were also subject to the land invasion of this sort. Uh, what have you done so far in the capacity? I cannot claim victories that I have not, uh, have done. I've not done anything because currently I, uh, I have, I've been a student leader so far. I have just joined the ANC now. I've joined the ANC earlier, but now I've just been a candidate now. And I'll address these issues once I get to be elected to be one of the candidates. I am aware that there are a number of NGOs operating in observatory who support vulnerable people such as Cape Mental Health, Sweet, Molo Songololo, Rape Crisis. I am also aware that there are some shelters within observatory. However, I am also aware that these are not always appropriate.
Pigo, you have thirty seconds.
Sense of freedom. Okay. But most of the solutions which must be provided must assist and restore dignity to those who are homeless. And this would require provision from social housing, which would not need is, which will need to be subsidized to those who are unemployed. So, uh, let me just stop there for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Pigo. You came in just under five seconds. I'm going to ask Azim to go next. My apologies, he hasn't joined us. Let me go to Yusuf next.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me? Hi, good evening, Edwin, and good evening to you and to all your viewers and your listeners in Ward fifty-seven and to our community, um, and to our community in, uh, in surrounding the Woodstock area, the observatory and the old, the, all the community in the precinct of Woodstock. It's four sectors and Ward fifty-seven is also one of the huge wards. My name is Yusuf Kononi. I'm standing for the National Freedom Party. So we know, um, I was listening to, to your previous candidates and, um, even to the previous candidate of, of, of the previous meeting also. You know, with my first, my first thing, and, and beside that, I can tell you also, I am a resident in the area. I live in Woodstock, uh, for past twenty-odd years. I'm in South Africa for twenty-eight years. I live in the upper Woodstock. Um, so I was the ex-person of the, the ex, the ex-chairperson of the Community Police Forum of Woodstock for the past three years. Uh, I was a member of, 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 I was, uh, police reservist in Woodstock for a couple of years, also in the nineties. And you know, uh, the first priority for me to stand, I wasn't actually going to stand, you know, while for all these years, I never, I was never interested. But you know what, sometimes, uh, sometimes, I'm also a voter and I can tell you, I'm also South African. I'm proudly South African. Even if I'm not born in South Africa, I hold the South African citizen and I'm proudly South African. And I can tell you, since, you know, for me standing, not because I felt like to stand. I'm standing to be a candidate because you know what? I want, I don't want to be a master. I want to be the servant for our people, for our community. And in the first priority, I'm thinking of, and the, the first thing we need to fight is actually the crime. Because if you look at observatory area, uh, there's too much crime happening there. There's so much crime, even the police station is, is, is not nearby. And if you look at it sometimes, it's only like one police van con- uh, uh, patrolling all the four sectors. And, and as, as a mission again, the, the, the precinct of Woodstock, it's huge. And then so observatory is, is a part of the Woodstock sets and is a sector one. Now, now you look at it as in the crime issue. The crime issue is high. And if you look at it also, what, what, what has the ANC, DA, the EFF and Antipet has in common? It's only allegations of corruption, mad administration's poor service delivery and job losses. Now look at our people. Now we have, we have so much.
You have thirty seconds, Yusuf.
Look, first thing we need to fight, if I'm going to be that, that candidate, first thing is crime. To fight the crime because we, because every single South African have the, have the, have the right for safety and security. This is the first thing we need to fight before the service deliveries. And we know the, the high corruption level and, and, and about, in, in about government, the, the DA and the ANC. So I thank you.
Thank you, Yusuf. I'm gonna ask Claude to go next.
Hi, good evening, you all. My name is Claude Rousseau. Um, and I am not a resident of the area. Um, but over the years, my wife has been working in the area and that has taken me, and I've seen the need and the rise of, of the people within the area. And over the past few years, I've been fortunate to get involved and to see the plight of the people living on the street in that area. I mean, if you go right down Fort Ricker Road, that main road, that, that is the first thing that meets the eye. And you know, for me, it was always a matter of, of watching and looking back and, and getting involved in as much as you as an individual can get. But through Spectrum Party, I have been given the opportunity to stand as a ward councillor for this area because of my interest in it, in the, the human suffering that's going on in that area. And, and that is how I got involved and avail myself to stand as a candidate. It's a very loaded question when you say, when you get, uh, elected as a ward councillor in a city where there's two hundred and thirty-one, uh, councillors, one's got to be realistic. Because obviously, as we know in South African politics, the way that it goes, if, if you're in a minority, uh, it's very difficult and it's very hard to push through legislation programs, um, to get things done that is required for a specific community. But in this case, I will say that, as we know, in the city of Cape Town, every ward councillor has got an allocation per annum of close to one million rand, uh, for menial projects and, uh, the independent, uh, Integrational Development Programme, uh, which, which first and foremost can be used in, in those communities. Um, we at Spectrum believe that, that, um, local municipalities is, is the government closest to the people. And, uh, it's that kind of government that is responsible to empower our people to build capacity and to learn and to take responsibility because we believe a responsible government grows responsible citizens. So, so that would be important for me.
You have thirty seconds, Claude.
That when we, we get in power is, is, is to, number one, be the responsible councillor that the area like that need and not a councillor that is elected and then disappears. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Claude. We're gonna move on to the second question for the evening, which I am posting now in the chat. So just to pause quickly, Edwin just wanted to jump in.
Yes, I just want to remind those people who've just joined the meeting that we are posting the questions for the candidates in the chat box. And, uh, we're giving each candidate the same amount of time to respond to the questions. But most importantly, I, please don't unmute yourselves during the, uh, during this meeting. It's only the candidates who we're going to allow to unmute themselves and to put their cameras on. Please, can you respect that? Thank you.
Thanks, Edwin. So the second question is, homelessness and people living on the street is a significant challenge in observatory. This is a complex problem rooted in a myriad of social issues, unemployment, mental health, substance dependency, collapse of the social safety net. How should the city address the issue and who would they need to work with? And a reminder to our candidates, you have two minutes to answer this question and I'm gonna kick us off with Yusuf. Yusuf, if you could unmute and turn on your video if you're still with us.
Okay, can you see?
Yes, great.
Hi, um, look, regardless of homeless, the homelessness, you know, there's not, not even one single South African want to be a homeless person. Not even, not even, not every, not even one, every South African want to be a homeless today. If you look at it, how do a person, he becomes a homeless today? Because of job loss, because of maybe, uh, because of the gentrification issue, who was, was supported by the DA, by the city government. Now that's why the people, they were forced either to sell their, sell their properties or maybe they, they, because of the high tariffs of water, electricity and levies and taxes and all that. So the people, they were pushed and maybe because of the high rent. Now the people were pushed to either live in the street because they couldn't afford it. Now you're talking about the homeless people. They're South Africans. Now who need to look after them? The government need to look after them because the government need to support them. We need to give them a support. Now what is our support? You can't just give them a food parcel or a loaf of bread and you think that is a support? Because that is actually against a human right. Because not even one single South African need to, he, he had, he wanted to, to live in the street. Not even my, my brother or your brother or your sister, anybody, any relatives to live in the streets. Now you look at it that way. Now the city, they need to come out and on the ground to see how our people suffering and how, how, how much is people having, experiencing so much challenges, especially when it comes to the homelessness now. Now you're looking at what is, what is the solution? A solution, why can't you, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
Yusuf, so we've given you an extra minute. So you, if you wanna add anything, you can go ahead and do so.
Because I don't know because I can't hear, I don't know if you, if you can hear me or not because I can hear you now.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I was, I was talking, but I don't know if you can, if you could hear me or not.
We can hear you.
Okay. Well, look, to come to, to come to, we need solutions, we need actions. We don't, we don't need cheap talks. Because every single councillor for the past sixteen years, the Western Cape government, there were only empty promises. I'm not going to speak about even the national government because I'm sick and tired of the national government, the ANC, I'm sick and tired of. Even exactly as a DA, if you look at even, even the, the, the previous, the ex-mayor of Cape Town, she was promising the people with, with, with so many locust houses and, and our ex-councillor, Brett Hiron, as a mayor candidate to the good party now. But look, what's happened in the past, where's all these locust houses that were going to be?
You now have thirty seconds, Yusuf.
Douglas Square, Pine Road, Douglas Square, South River Market today. If they did come and bought that locust houses for the people who were promised for few years ago, today it will never be homeless people in our area, especially surrounding, surrounding Woodstock or even observatory. It's, it's not a shame for the, for the, for the DA and for the ANC, even for the good party. Because you know what, they come from that side, they come from that government who actually is only a change, the only the change.
I'm gonna cut you off now, Yusuf. You've got your three minutes. And I'm gonna ask Claude if you can answer this question next. Claude?
Hi, can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, um, dealing with homelessness, it's like you say, it's a significant challenge. And, um, for one, to deal with it in the way that the current government is dealing with it is definitely not going to work. It, it's not helping. Um, we have got to be wary and aware of the fact that homelessness sometimes is, is so, so complicated. It's, it's not only about somebody not having a job. There is other social problems, social issues, psychological issues. So the approach needs to be comprehensive. And for us at Spectrum, that is what our approach would be, is, is to support all necessary NGOs that deals with, with, with these kinds of, of, of situations and, and people that are, that find themselves, um, on, on this list as homelessness, as homeless people. Yes, uh, you can provide homes, yes, you can provide home, you can support homeless cellists, cellists. But the one thing we do not believe in is that you can just go around and round up people and stuck them in a place and hope that the problem will disappear. Of course, we want cleaner cities, but the homeless people will always be with us. And I think it's important from a social point of view that, that we acknowledge this and, and strengthen those organizations that deal with this. And wherever we, we, we can and it's possible, ensure that, that economically our city is viable so that possible investors want to invest in our areas and in our city. So if homelessness as is of, of, as is of result of, of somebody that lost, lost their job, that new opportunities will arise from, from, from new job opportunities. But, but our main thing will be, it's, it's a, it's a holistic approach to this problem. And it's not something that by a simple, uh, one-track minded way that, that you can get rid of. Um, there's got to be a comprehensive, uh, approach to this thing, um, from economic point of view, from a social point of view.
Claude?
In order to deal with this, yes. Uh, I'm, I've, I've just about said what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Claude. And I'll ask Pigo to go next.
Okay, thank you, thank you once again. Thank you once again. Uh, the ANC notes gentrification as a problem. I am aware that there is a number of NGOs operating in observatory to support the vulnerable people such as Cape Mental Health, Sweet, Molo Songololo, Rape Crisis. I'm also aware that there are some shelters within observatory. However, I'm also aware that these are not always appropriate to those who feel a sense of freedom of living on the streets. But most of all, solutions which must be provided must assist to restore dignity to those who are homeless. And this would require provision of social housing. And this would require provision of social housing, which would need to be subsidized for those who are unemployed. That is the only solution that can help those who are homeless. And we know that people who are homeless are always the ones that are accused of the crimes that happen in Observatory. So we are saying at the African National Congress that if we can be able to provide social housing and this gentrification that is taking place over that street or that road in Observatory, we can be able to fight everything that has to do with crime, social, all these social problems and all these social ills and the safety around Observatory. Thank you so much.
Thanks Pigo. And the last candidate to go will be Uzola. Uzola, are you still with us?
Can you get, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you Kense, thank you for the opportunity. We, as the African Freedom Revolution, we say these are the direct, direct problems and the results of the failing system of the governing party and as well as the DA. Because what you look at, the whole problems that we are talking about are the systems that are lacking. Poor management and poor planning by the city of Cape Town and their colleagues. The problem that we have, I think, the way that, how we can solve this, the homeless. And we bearing in mind that the District Six is a very rich place, especially when we look at the history of the place and also the crime. What we say as the African Freedom Revolution, we said we will encourage small and media enterprise businesses and also do skill and training development in the area, especially for the youth. And then we will identify partners, especially those who have shelters and so on, and see where are they lacking and try and improve in those systems. And also partner with the whole process and look at the backlog actually of the housing development in the area and try to accelerate that. And also look at the problem of the billing system that this current city has that make it to be so difficult for our people. And try and improve that and come up with a better system that will accommodate everybody. Because the current system proves that it's not working and then is very expensive. And also, we will encourage youth recreation centers and also support small entrepreneurs because we believe that people are not just becoming homeless is because they don't have opportunities, especially job opportunities. Encourage skills development, encourage youth entrepreneurship in the area and also tourism, especially in that region. When you look at District Six, it has a very rich history. You must encourage and try and preserve what is rightfully theirs. And also emphasize on the monitoring and evaluation system on which has proven that the city of Cape Town is failing our people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Zola. So now we're going to go to the third and final question of the evening. And this question is now being posted in the chat box to the candidates. You will have three minutes to answer this question. And the question is: Should you be elected ward councillor? You will need to both represent and account to the people of this ward. How will you represent the diversity of views in this ward? Especially the likes of the Lesbek Action Campaign and the feelings about unused city land that could see social housing being built on it. How will you engage with, communicate and make yourself accessible to and report back to us? You have three minutes for this question and I'd like to start with Pigo, if you can unmute and go ahead. Pigo, if you are still with us, hi. You have three minutes.
I am still here, sorry. I am still here, sorry. Okay, thank you. I understand that Observatory residents are diverse. Can I start the video? Okay. I understand that Observatory residents are diverse. There are controversial issues on which there will always be divergent opinions and that I, as a ward councillor, must hear from all. However, there are certain principles by the ANC that are inserted and instilled to us that always stand. Some of these are, everyone should be accommodated as far as possible. As regard the Lesbek Action Campaign, there are some principles by which we stand. The key one being the destruction of heritage species linked to the damage to the environment. What is certain through the ANC policy on social housing is clear and ANC would not support a huge concrete building, which would do not do nothing to provide, so go with the social housing as the main trust but with a reference to environmental and indigenous rights as well. I spoke with a few comrades of the ANC and they have said that we have to be very practical and honest and it's a pledge of the ANC to be available twenty-four seven to the people of Observatory, Salt River and Mowbray. So we'll.
Pigo, I think we've lost you. Pigo, we can't hear you. I don't know if you can hear me. Okay, so I'm going to mute your video Pigo because maybe we can sort out your sound in the meantime. And I'm going to ask Claude to go next. Claude, do you have three minutes for this question?
Hi. As we usually, every community day is a very controversial issue and this is probably one of those for this specific area. Number one, like I always believe, consultation, consultation, consultation. Speak to all the relevant stakeholders. Try and end where each party comes from. And in light of that, come to conclusions and try to work a way forward. Communities are built based on the social cohesion that can be managed in a specific area. So it's vital to have different communities to come together and to, at a time, look at the challenges of a specific area in order to find solutions for problems. Housing in Cape Town and especially social housing is a huge issue in our city and especially in this specific ward. So from our point of view, it would always be a matter of consultation, work with communities, gather with communities, talk with communities, understand the environmental impact that any development would have in certain spaces within our community. Because we don't want to do something today and tomorrow cry about a wrong mistake. And for me, the biggest sadness over the last twenty-odd years was that we would sometimes use the needs of our communities as political playboils to play off against each other. And we should stop that. We should, like I've said in the beginning, that our local government is the closest to our people and that is where we should build the necessary social cohesion, so that our people can understand each other, that we can, that we are able to sympathize with one another and through that grow better understanding for what we need to. So this for me would be an important thing, consultation about this in how we can take this forward and get, in the end, the best outcome for our community, our ward and our city. Yes.
Thanks Claude. I'll ask Zola to go next. Zola, if you can hear us? I see you're still on the call, but I don't think you can hear us. So.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, here we go. Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Kense. What I said is that is the African Freedom Revolution. Yes, we will respect the environmental impact that might be happening in all the development. But what we are saying is that people need to be integrated. And also the land that is there must not be used for only a certain race of our society. It must cater for everybody. And then we believe that what the problem that the city has is the systems that they have. The systems that they're implementing are failing our people. Our people should not be homeless. And then they are the indigenous people of this country. Is the systems that are failing them and these are the direct results of the people that have been robbed of their property and as well as their indigenous land that have been left for them, for their ancestors. And then we will accelerate township and buildings and renovate and title these ownership and to ensure city renewal and economic growth by local people and restore economic and micro-ownership. And then we will encourage small business development and micro enterprise in all the communities that we serve in, especially in the Observatory area. Yes, we do understand that the people are diverse. And then how we will communicate with them is due to their diversity, their youth. Nowadays, we use social media to communicate. And then we will attend or we will arrange community meetings in order to get the communication clear. But the IDP process is the main process that will help us through the community liaison processes so that we can know exactly what the people are saying. And then the problem that we are having is that there are issues that have been opposed to our communities. And that is where the previous and the current councillors and the system that is failing our people, they decide for the people. Whereas it should be the other way around. You get the mandate from the people through your IDP process and then you implement what the community wants and work closely with the people. And don't undermine the people, don't decide for the people, hear what they are saying. And that's the main thing. But the main problem here is the systems that are failing. Our people, our people are finding themselves jobless, homeless, and that is not the right way. But the main thing here is that we must improve our systems that we are currently using. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Zola. And our final candidate, Youssef, you can go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Look, if we become as the elected party, as a national freedom party, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of challenges we will actually fix and try our best to fix it with the governing government in the Western Cape. Because you know what? Diversity between, in Ward Fifty-seven actually, it's two unique areas, Observatory and Mowbray. You know why? Because they're inviting a lot of students, a lot of foreigners from all over the world. So they come to these two areas. Now, these two areas, actually, I can see it with the diversity and the people that interact with each other. There's unity, there is unity. Please don't take me, don't understand me wrong. There is unity in these two areas, especially in Ward Fifty-seven. And I wish other communities that can learn from Observatory and from Mowbray. You know what? Because that's what you call real rainbow nation. Different people from different colors, they live together and it's such a good life. But only the failure is the system between the national government and the provincial government. They're failing us, they're failing us as the people in this area with a lot of things, especially when it comes now. When it comes to policing, for example, when it comes to now, we were talking earlier about the homeless people. There's nobody want to be a homeless, but there is a solution. If a government really want to put back the dignity and pride to our people, they will never be a homeless people. Why can't you give them jobs? There's so many, you know, if I'm going to start talking, three minutes is too little for me. You know what? The list is long and long. But definitely, if I be elected as a candidate for Ward Fifty-seven, there's a lot of things will be changed and we will give the power back to the people. That's our aim. Our aim is to give the power back to the people. Because you know what? We, the servants, we are not the masters. Because if I'm a leader, I become a servant. I am not a master. I thank you.
Thanks Youssef. I'd like to hand back to Edwin and thank you for all the candidates for engaging with those questions.
Thank you, Kense. I'm going to post a poll now, which I would like everybody to participate in. I see there are still thirty-seven people with us. Your name will not be recorded. It's only your vote that will be recorded. And the idea of this poll is to ask you to choose the person who you felt came across best in this meeting. I'm sure I don't need to point out to you that there were some fairly specific questions posed to the candidates and several of the candidates avoided answering those questions. So I'd like you all to please vote. I see people have started voting now. The results of the poll, how we're going to use this, is that the two top polling candidates will be invited to join another town hall meeting, the last in our series of town hall meetings next week. So far, the two top candidates from last Tuesday have confirmed that they can do Tuesday next week. So I'm hoping that whoever tops this poll will be available Tuesday next week. So now, I'm going to do something which I hadn't planned to do, but I believe it's important to do, especially on the basis of some of the comments which appeared in the chat. Let me just, while I'm talking about the comments in the chat, they will all be copied and pasted to the Facebook page, that's the Observatory Civic Association Facebook page, where this is currently being broadcast live. And it means that those of you who have posted questions to specific candidates, those candidates will have an opportunity to answer your questions on the Facebook page. We'll also be posting the recordings of today's meeting and Tuesday's meeting to the OCA website. That will probably happen over the weekend. I'll share the link to everybody. And we will also be posting, together with the recordings of those meetings, the manifestos which people have received. So at the moment, only twenty-one of the thirty-five people have voted. Please, could the remaining people vote in the poll that's on your screen? So I'm putting up this poster because many people have asked what happened to the DA candidate. So this poster, this picture that you can see on your screen, labeled a community safety discussion, but then labeled as a town hall meeting, which is hosted by the Ward Fifty-seven candidate, Yusuf Mohammed. Now, it's interesting that this post went out. Is your mic muted? Can you just check that everyone's mic phones are muted? This post went out barely forty-eight hours before the OCA organized town hall meeting. And as you can see, it was scheduled for exactly the same time as the OCA town hall meeting. So just to get back to the Ward Fifty-seven, our Ward Fifty-seven candidate, Yusuf Mohammed. When I was first trying to get contact details for all the thirty-four candidates standing in our ward, I reached out to fellow DA candidates in neighboring wards and asked them please to provide me with Yusuf Mohammed's phone number and also his email address because I felt it's really important. and also his email address because I felt it's really important that the DA candidate should appear at one of our town hall meetings because, let's face it, in the last election in twenty sixteen, the DA candidate won with, I think it was seventy five percent of the vote. So obviously, the majority of the voters in our ward want to hear what the DA candidate has to say. So I then independently confirmed from two different people that I had the correct phone number for Yusuf Mohammed. I left, I phoned that number often and each time it went through to voicemail and I left a message on that number uh asking him, please to get in touch with me and let me know when he would be available to join our uh our town hall meetings. I also sent it by WhatsApp, but uh he didn't reply to those either. And then the last thing I just want to comment on is if you look at this poster on your screen, there is an email address, yusuf457@gmail.com. I've tried from three different computers and three different email addresses emailing the invite for him to join one of our town hall meetings and all of those emails bounced back. So I'm uh I have to remain impartial in this matter because the idea was for uh for me as the OCA representative, to give everybody an opportunity uh to join in these town hall meetings irrespective of which party they represent. But I do think it's important to note that I've really tried to get in touch with the uh DA candidate more than any of the other candidates because uh the DA did get seventy five percent of the vote in the last election. Um maybe if anybody uh has any way of getting in touch with uh Yusuf Mohammed, they could let me know either through WhatsApp or uh via email and we'll see, maybe we can get him to join the final town hall meeting on Tuesday and then we can ask him why he has displayed no interest whatsoever in communicating with his Ward Fifty Seven electorate. Um so I see we've got six minutes left. Um there are still nine people who haven't voted in the poll. I'm going to leave the poll up for a few more minutes. Um please do uh put your vote on the poll. Kenzie, is is the poll clearly visible to everybody? Yeah, it is. So please, the okay, I see one more person's uh voted, but I would ask you, please to uh for all thirty four people who are currently in this to to place their vote in the poll because it does determine who uh will appear at the next town hall meeting on Tuesday next week. Now, the reason why uh we're actually finishing early is because we had scheduled this on the basis of six candidates uh had confirmed that they would be attending this meeting. At the very beginning of the meeting, I announced that uh I'd managed to reach Shanaaz Mohammed of the DIP on the phone and she said to me she was having difficulty uh with her wifi connection. So uh that's her reason for not having participated. Azim Omar for the DPAP, uh when I phoned him to remind him that we were waiting for him to join the meeting, uh his phone went straight to voicemail. So I can only assume that his uh phone was switched off. So just a final reminder then um to, there's still uh six people who haven't polled, but I'm going to have to close the poll within a two minutes or so. And I will then end the meeting straight after that. Remember that the recording of this meeting uh can be found on the OCA Facebook page. We will leave it up there until election day as a as a service to the voters so that they can um uh hear wh- what transpired and see what transpired if they were not able to uh join the meeting today or the meeting on Tuesday, which is also up on the OCA Facebook page. I see a couple of people have got their hands up and they want to ask questions, but I don't think it's fair to alter the structure of this meeting now. Uh I also saw that there were uh questions directed to specific candidates in the chat. We're not going to entertain those now. What what we will do is, as I said earlier, the format of Tuesday's town hall meeting will be different to this one inasmuch as we will open it uh to the floor and we will also be addressing uh some of the questions which have been posted in today's chat and in Tuesday's chat to to the candidates firstly, and then we will open it up to the floor so that anybody who's uh joined the Zoom meeting on Tuesday will be able to uh pose follow up questions or new questions directly to the four candidates or maybe five candidates if the DA deigns to uh honor us with their presence. Uh I'm really hoping that Yusuf will do that.
Edwin, so sorry, the poll has disappeared when you shared the poster and people are saying in the chat they weren't able to vote. So I don't know if you could possibly just share it with us again.
You say you can see. Can you see it now, Julie? I haven't touched it, it's
Um I don't know if maybe you should do just reshare.
All right. I wonder if, no, but if I screen share it, then uh you won't actually be able to register your vote. You'll only see the results. That's very strange that it disappeared because I've stopped screen sharing, as you can see. And I can see the poll on my screen. Uh well, eighty three percent of the participant participants uh participated. You've got a screenshot of this. I could try launching it again, but then uh we won't know which people have voted previously. So yeah, I'm 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 really sorry uh that something's gone wrong with the poll, but as I say, um eighty three percent of the participants voted. So thank you very much, everybody. It's one minute before I said uh this meeting would end. I'd like to respect that. And so I'm going to close, I've ended the poll and uh I'm going to actually share the results before I uh close the meeting itself. So thank you very much, everybody, for your participation. And we look forward to seeing you next week on Tuesday where it will be a real grilling of the four candidates who make it into Tuesday's round. And uh we're looking forward to some very robust uh conversations during that one hour on Tuesday next week. And please, final reminder, you can get a uh you can see the recording of this meeting on the OCA Facebook page. And over the course of the weekend, it will also be on the OCA website.